Here.
Mr. Huries?
Present.
All right. I'd like to, um, call for motion to approve the agenda first.
So.
A second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. And we'll move on to acknowledgements. We'd like to thank, um, the donation of a woodcut print by Charles Beck entitled October, which was donated by Charles's wife Joyce and their children. And the framing of the print was donated by Chuck Christensen. Uh, this was given to Kennedy's, Kennedy Secondary Schools Art Department. So, thank you very much for that donation.
And two others that I'll, I'll throw in there too is, uh, congratulations Sabrina Frani that only took ninth place in, in the three hundred meter hurdles. And, uh, uh, we had a couple other tracksters there as well. And, uh, the golf, Nate Longton and Aaron Shellstead are playing tomorrow and Wednesday. And then that'll be the officially the end of the, uh, two thousand seventeen eighteen sports season. So, and so Derek Abraham will be here at the next school board meeting doing an update. And, and then the start of school is less than two months away for his, that's written. So, he's got about, uh, maybe five, six weeks in there that there's a break. So, congratulations to them.
All right.
And you also.
Oh, here we go. And. It, uh, Spartan Nash, which is Sunmart, uh, gave us a nice thousand dollar check, which is awesome. So, thank them.
Great. Thank you, Spartan Nash. Was that based off the receipt?
I'm not sure. He walked in one day and handed it.
Well, that's still wonderful.
We like that.
To see it. Oh, yeah. All right. So, um, we will begin our reports this morning with Shane Toki giving us an update on student handbook.
Good morning, Assistant Principal Toki.
Good morning, everybody. Thanks for having me here this morning. Um, I believe Superintendent Ness will have the electronic version up on the board. Um, I'll just, I'll run through the, the changes that are highlighted. Um, the way we do this every year is, um, the elementary principals, middle school assistant principals, high school, secondary school principal, send me input and then I update the K twelve district wide, um, student handbook for our, uh, schools here in town, which do not include, it does not include any private U Academy. Um, well, first change is, uh, page two, we did add a, uh, table of contents. There was some input provided outside of that group that would request a table of contents, so we did add the table of contents, which I found quite handy through this process myself, so. Um, but through that addition of the table of contents, uh, I did then rearrange a few sections. So, if there's something that's just highlighted, just the title, that means it was just a simple move of, uh, pre-established language. Page four, um, under parent guardian responsibilities, uh, we just had some issues where parents are, uh, delivering their children to school late, especially at the elementary level. Um, and rather than just dropping them off at the office, they want to walk them to their classroom, which is disruptive to the school day for the teachers that have already started teaching. And so, we did add under parent responsibilities that, um, once the school day has started, once a, uh, a parent is delivering their child, that the parent wouldn't pass the office unless there was other business with the teacher that they had, uh, predetermined and the teacher was expecting them. So, um, that was just a, an addition there to the parent guardian responsibilities. Page five, just one simple, uh, word change. The school used to request a note or a phone call, um, but due to our attendance policy and changes, um, request isn't strong enough. We require one, just so that we can verify whether the absence is excused or not. Uh, just an update on the attendance policy and flow chart. You won't see any changes there. Uh, I'll just comment briefly on the fact that at the end of the school year, especially nine through twelve, I did send a teacher survey out to, uh, seek input, ask how they thought the first year went. As you remember, last June, we sat and talked quite in detail about the, uh, attendance policy. Um, and what the feedback has been, has been quite, um, positive with, um, you know, some, some side notes to that. The teachers have noticed that once the students hit that mark of ten excused absences, magically enough, they stop missing school. Um, that's been one real positive that the teachers have noticed. You know, ten is still quite high for one semester, um, but the, the teachers haven't felt that they've had a, a strong, um, impact on having to go then and reduce grades for absences beyond the ten. Obviously, there are a few extenuating circumstances there. Um, but I would say the biggest layer that we've noticed through the attendance offices and the, in the high school offices, that parents are communicating with us a lot more, proactively, um, calling us ahead of time, telling us about vacations. If their child has already missed four or five days of school and they're going on a week's vacation, they communicate with us ahead of time, which then allows us to, you know, work with the teachers, so the kids are prepared before they leave versus playing catch up when they come back. Um, and one of our math teachers, um, I'm not going to try to guess who it is. I'm pretty sure I know who it is, but in the survey, I allowed it to be anonymous. Um, uh, did also layer in some data that students who miss, uh, ten or less days of school, um, perform substantially higher academically, obviously, than those kids that do not. And, and this teacher did some comparative net analysis with their data, um, indicating, you know, here's how the percentage of students did that academically that missed less than ten days of school. And even if, if they drilled it down to less than that, you can see that, um, the correlation between attendance and school success is obviously quite high and the teacher has the data to back that up. The biggest change there for next year is we're going to keep that conversation alive. We're going to keep working with teachers that indicated maybe that they hadn't used it as much the first year as they would like. Um, but the other, uh, comment on that too is that some teachers felt that they didn't need to impact the student's grade, which they have the discretionary ability to do so, uh, in a negative way, because they felt the students' grades suffered enough by being gone, because that natural consequence obviously comes into play when students have missed a lot of school. And the, and the result is our, our goal is to have kids in school consistently and communicating with teachers, um, so that we can have, uh, you know, an ongoing conversation and have students be successful, um, in school. So, questions about the attendance piece before I move on? That was just wrong.
Do you, do you feel like there was more communication in general?
Uh, way more.
And, and how did that get, um, instigated? Did the school send something out or were the students tuned into it or how did it?
Multiple, multiple layers. That's a great question. The, the first conversation started in the fall at the student, um, uh, back to school meetings. We have class meetings with the class, with students by grade level, and we laid out the policy, which brought up a lot of questions. Kids would stop me in the hallway or talk to their teachers and say, hey, I've got this coming up. Is that going to be excused or is my grade going to be docked? And almost one hundred percent of the time, if the student talked to us ahead of time, it had no impact on their grade, because we could prepare for it. Um, the other layer to that is the new calling system. You know, once we got the phone systems in place where after ten o'clock or, or whatever it would be, where a phone call would go home to a student that maybe popped up as unverified the first few hours of the day, that really helps, because, you know, when you're working with manpower versus electronic power, um, it's hard for a secretary to make five hundred phone calls, but that automatic call really, um, you know, notified parents that they needed to communicate with the school. So, that, after a month of people getting calls, now they start calling you first, so they don't get that call, uh, coming to them while they're at work. Um, so that really helped. And then the communication with our, um, truancy, uh, or what do we, what do we call her now? We used to call her a.
Attendance.
Yeah, you know, it's a truancy intervention specialist, I guess, as we call Sarah Campa. Um, the communication between her and students, her and parents, then her back to the teachers, that is probably the part that we fine-tuned the most throughout the year, because once a student started to hit a certain, you know, uh, mark on that flow chart, um, she would, I, she would tell the teacher, you know, this student, um, is at ten absences. They are now, um, you know, at that step in the, in the flow chart, um, have a conversation with the student. And, and if a parent would come back and say, you know, here's the medical documentation, here's why we're missing so much school, then I would send a follow-up email to that teacher saying, you know what, their absences from here forth are, you know, excused. Please continue to work with the student. And so, that communication cycle, um, you know, always existed, but we didn't always have the, um, base, the basis behind it to know what we should do next, because the conversations weren't always effective. Um, and now there's a little bit more of a, I guess, a, a backbone to it. And very, very few teachers indicated that the policy hurts students' grades, um, because that wasn't our goal. Our goal was just to have something to kind of hold over them to have a little better, like I said, a backbone to it. But now that the students are more attentive to how many, you know, days it really is. And when you have a conversation with the parent and say, you know, yeah, your child has missed ten days, it's not at the end of the semester that you're having that conversation. It's usually about halfway through. Um, and halfway through a semester is only forty, forty-five days, and that's a, that's a significant percentage of time. So, um, the conversation, you know, it's, and attendance will be for an ever issue, but, um, you know, especially in today's society, there's a lot of extenuating circumstances with blended families and mental health, the crisis that we deal with in and out of school, um, just working with those families, knowing that we're here to support them. The policy isn't there to try to hurt anybody. Oftentimes gives parents the support they need to say, no, you have to go to school, because they get into that power struggle at home at times. And if there's a real issue going on there, they've got a lot of opportunities to present that as well, and we can work with them versus try to hinder them, so.
Uh, one more piece of this. Could you define how this is different than the truancy policy? Because they're, they fit together, but they're.
Yep.
Separate.
You know, our attendance policy that we added last year really focused more on excused absences. You know, you know, we would run into the issue, especially in the spring semester, uh, with students that, you know, kind of figured out on their class schedules, um, and not to pick on a certain subject area, but there wasn't a lot of homework to be made up if you had a two-hour lifetime round class. And so, they could call in sick and the parent could call in infinite, an infinite number of times, and they would maybe, you know, take a two-hour break during the afternoon for whatever it might be. And, um, so the excused attendance piece was really starting to be taken advantage of, if it'd been certain circumstances. Um, and the truancy piece is unexcused absences. You know, students who are either not being excused by their parents or they're, they're coming to school, but then blowing off a few hours a day and not being, uh, excused by a parent or the appropriate documentation. So, um, the, the truancy piece, the student who's truant is not, uh, excused by parent or school to be out of class. Um, th- this policy focused more on the excessive excused, uh, absences that, uh, students and parents were, um, starting to play the system a little bit.
Thanks.
Does that answer your question?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other questions? The rest of it's quick, I promise. Um, moving on to page nine, um, one piece that we ran into this year, and it, it, I guess I didn't realize it didn't exist, is that we did not require students to have a picture taken. Um, we had some students refuse to have their picture taken with our photographer this year, and it might not seem like a big deal, but we do everything electronically. If a substitute teacher comes in and they log into the teacher's computer, they can't see a picture of that student. They don't know who they're dealing with and they're not familiar faces. Also, students that are, um, on disciplinary, um, you know, referrals, we like to notify our offices and our secretaries who shouldn't be on campus, um, because, you know, maybe they're, uh, suspended for a day or two, and those students by law are, are, are required to stay off school grounds during the suspension period, and the, uh, secretaries wouldn't know what they look like. Um, and they, and so, um, I did some communication with Pemberton Law Firm, talked to Christie Hastings, um, and then we came up with this, this change here that says, "All students enrolled in ISD five forty-four schools are required to have a picture or portrait taken for their digital file or permanent record. This requirement is necessary for student safety and identification purposes. Upon request, pictures would not be disseminated to media, published online, or displayed in yearbooks. Students and parents requesting that photos are not shared with media or other publications should be sure to check the appropriate response on this, on their student registration form each year." So, they still have that ability to opt out of it being public anywhere, but for our internal records, we need a photo to identify students that are coming into our buildings, so. Uh, page ten, lunch program. Um, it's, you know, this is something that's kind of come and gone over the years, and this year it was, it was pretty, uh, prevalent again, where students are either bringing food in, um, or having, trying to have food delivered, whether it be by a delivery service or their parent. Um, so, we're, we're trying to clean that up, so we added a note under the lunch program that school cannot be brought in or delivered to the school unless it's part of a, a sponsored event, activity, or program. Um, we've had parents in the middle of second hour deliver caribou coffee, and, um, we're not calling kids down to get that, and we're telling the parents to take it back home with them at this point, because it just, uh, disrupts. Um, and students bringing food in, you know, we just run into a lot of flexible schedules.
What's wrong with that?
Yeah. If it's not the flavor I like, then I can't. The, uh, you know, we have kids with flexible schedules and they're running late and they like to, you know, bring a big bag of Dairy Queen or Taco John's back or whatever it might be, and, um, we just don't want that type of food to be eaten in our commons areas. It's not, our, our commons areas aren't set up to be lunch program areas. Um, breakfast and driver's ed are just, uh, sections that I relocated. It seemed to fit better under, uh, that area than where they were before. Uh, page twelve has the language for students participating in statewide assessments, and I just, I cut and paste that right from the Minnesota Department of Ed website and then added the live link. So, if parents look at this online through our website, they can click the link and get the refusal, uh, for the statewide testing form and print it themselves, but it'll also be added as back of the handbook that's, uh, disseminated to each family at the beginning of the school year. Um, and that's required language, uh, that we need to have in our handbook. Um, no changes throughout the student activities pieces, participation. Next page, we have, uh, eighteen, um, just that we've had, you know, just, you know, what goes on in schools and in the media, and we have some students that will, will challenge us at times just based upon temperature in the building or comfort, uh, wanting to carry blankets and pillows and wear long or heavy jackets, and, uh, we wanted just, we wanted more leg, more of a leg to stand on to tell them what our expectations are, so we put it in writing. Um, that's in the third paragraph there on page eighteen. And then down towards the bottom, just another section with the student photo ID requirement. Um, it's in two places that way. Electronic devices on page nineteen, just, uh, two issues that came up this year with the, you know, evolution of technology, the smart watch, Apple Watch, um, you know, if a student can't have their phone out in class, but now they're rolling their sleeve up and they're doing the exact same thing on their phone, teachers have run into that, so we just added that language with smart watch. And then they love to put a speaker in their backpack and walk the halls and play their favorite songs that, uh, might not be appropriate for the learning environment, so, uh, we added that piece. And then in working with, it's fun stuff. It's just borked a whole sometimes. Um, electronic devices for middle school, and this is going to be, um, a significant change for one grade level. Uh, the seventh grader's going into eighth, and it'll affect nobody else outside of that, because they won't know what they're missing. Um, and a, a great observation by our middle school assistant principals, Mr. Steinbrenner and Mr. Strand, that, you know, you walk into the cafeteria and the kids have finished eating, and you'll see a table of six, eight kids, and none of them are talking to each other. Uh, they might be electronically, but they're playing, they're playing games or Snapchatting, and the social interaction piece has been, um, you know, something that is, is, is being affected by that, so. Um, and the doubt, you know, and part of that is, is good, because that's what life is about these days, but the negative side of that was the trouble that was coming from that, because, you know, you might be sitting three tables away and, and, and we're having a, a not-so-appropriate or positive conversation electronically that we wouldn't have face-to-face. Um, and so, the problems that were coming in after the middle school lunch period helped them to determine that there will be no cell phones or electronic devices allowed during the lunch period for grades K through eight, which used to read K through six. So, we added seven, eight. Um, and so, that's, uh, in, in, in their opinion, the change that needed to be made there, and, um, the seventh graders will be the ones that have to adjust to it, but.
Mr. Toki, so that I can just hear the parents now saying, I need to communicate with my kid when I'm picking him up, blah, 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 blah. So, what, what's your.
Our common response to that is we have our offices manned twenty-four, seven, and, you know, you might, you may have to leave a message, you might have to call back, because it's a, it's a busy place, but, um, call the office. We get mess, we, we've never missed a kid yet in my, and to the best of my knowledge, there are office callers been made. We have plenty of people here working the phones that we can, we can reach your kid probably faster than they should with their cellphone anyways. Um, and, and middle school kids don't have that option during the day at all, other than during lunch. Um, and so, uh, like I said, the seventh graders that maybe were used to checking their phone at lunch to see what mom or dad, um, had planned for them after school, um, you know, there's, there's going to be a slight change to that, but, um, it's still very doable through the office staff that we have here at the school, so, at any of the schools. Uh, tobacco policy on page twenty. Um, you know, a few years ago, we added language about, um, e-cigarettes and vapor pens and things like that, because, and, and then that dipped a little bit the usage, and now it's really spiked. It's been a, a real common conversation at schools and really middle school age kids. Um, but the other issue we run into is, um, the convenience stores around the nation sell caffeine pouches that look just like, uh, a tobacco pouch, and kids will put those in their lip and say, well, it's just caffeine. Um, and it's a look-alike product that causes, uh, problems, and, and they don't, we don't need to have those in the school building, so, um, you know, the products that, that, because you could, you can slip a tobacco product into a caffeine, um, device or, uh, pack it and, and make it look the same, and we just don't want to have to dig that deep into it, so that's a, a change to the tobacco policy, just that the caffeine products are look-alike, um, are not allowed. And I think that's it, as far as changes, other than the addition of the form that goes with the refusal to statewide testing, that will be at the, attached to the back of the handbook.
Gee, how many years has it been now since, uh, Christie hates Pemberton Law really reviewed? We, we've got a really, really good handbook and, and, uh, so just, just curious, uh.
I want to say we're going into about year six now.
We haven't made many adjustments to sort of the current times.
Yep. Just, you know, what we do is we, you know, personally, I, I keep a working copy on my desk year-round, and when something comes up that's not addressed in the handbook, I put a sticky note in it, and that's how these changes get made. And then also ongoing communication with the, the other principals of what's popped up in their areas. Um, and so, it's, it's, it's been, I would say, minor, other than the attendance piece that was, that was a little bit heavier last year. Um, but, yep, and then anything that I feel, we feel, is something that's not just changing from requested to required, you know, something a little heavier with the student ID. Um, still, uh, pop a note with some suggested language to Christie Hastings to make sure that we're not doing something that is, uh, seem, you know, that seems inappropriate or falls outside the boundaries of our ability to control, so. And there's new things every year, and, um, just keeps the jobs interesting, so. Other questions?
It's kind of trite, but you know, the question I had about, um, how parents would communicate? Do you think there should be a sentence in there that says, "Parents are expected to call the office if they need to"? You know, is that too fundamental?
You know, I think it's, you know, it, to me, it's similar to, you know, our, our drop-off, pick-off in the morning, the parents that want, that, that get caught on that wash, we, we offer busing, you know, and then buses will drop right up at the door, but not everything always fits into everybody's schedule, and, um, I think you could, I think you can offer that, but in, in a certain fashion, I also think that's kind of stating the obvious, that we, we've got a phone number right there, just call us, you know, and if, and if we fail you, you know, if something, if, if we drop the ball somewhere, tell us how, how that happened, how we can fix it, because, um, you know, we, we really do our best to try to keep, I mean, if a parent trusts us enough to give their child their caribou coffee during second hour, I hope they trust us enough to call and say, hey, I'm going to pick my student up at two o'clock instead of three o'clock today. Can you get them that message? And it, you know, with the digital technology of knowing where, I mean, I can pull my phone out of my pocket and Synergy will tell me if a kid is in passing time or if they're on their way to third hour, or if they're sitting at a desk in room twenty-four fifteen. Um, it's, it's, it's pretty easy to track them down. Where, where we, um, need to continue to improve is our, our, our learning environment is quite dynamic, meaning teachers aren't always in their classrooms. You know, they're, they're out in the courtyard, they're out on the, on the field, they're, they're doing other things outside of the classroom, and just working with our teachers to make sure that we're always one hundred percent aware of where they are, so if something does come up, we can find that teacher or that class or that student. And, um, and we've done quite well with that too, because most of the teachers do carry some sort of a device that's easy to reach.
So, do you feel synergy, school messenger, all of these things working well right now?
Yeah.
For the admin specifically?
Specifically, yes. It, you know, it's always a learning curve when there's different layers to it and, and, but the more communication, the better. And, um, I feel that we've adjusted quite well to this, this layer of technology that's available, and it's just getting everyone on board and, and now, not looking at it so broad, but now narrow the channels down of how do we communicate these specific layers of communication, so it's not going up too broad, and, um, knowing what's available, so that when something comes up, you can be, you know, succinct, I guess. But it's been, it's been a, a, a really positive flow into, uh, just keeping communication open.
Great. No complaints about school messenger from the parents?
Well, you know, when you have kids of your own and you've got lots of lunch accounts and things like that, and you have a phone fight office, it's training yourself and the, and your kids, you know, parents always want to talk to you, whether it's at a sporting event or church or whatever it is, of why, how do I get the phone, my phone to stop ringing when my kid's lunch account hits seven dollars, you know? Um, it's, it's, that's the learning curve, but it, it's got people thinking about it and talking about it, so I think in the, you know, grand scheme of things, then it's working, you know?
I think the biggest growing thing, excuse me, was, um, a parent would bring the child in and say eight forty-five, okay? So, they were marked absent at eight twenty, and what was happening is the synergy, the school messenger was still calling them at ten o'clock, because they weren't, they were, it was drawing the eight twenty absent and not the updated absent at like ten o'clock. So, so Elaine, uh, pulled, I'm surprised she has hair left, uh, trying to connect with them, uh, was difficult, but that was managed, and, and since that time, I don't think we've had the complaint.
No, and I think in the long run, parents appreciate the fact that there's a system there that's not foolproof, because there, there are situations just like that, and there's a, you know, a million of them, um, but they like the idea that they're going to be notified if their, their child isn't where they're supposed to be. And it might cause a slight hesitation or a scare of, hey, I got notified, and I thought I tried, I know I dropped them off. Um, did they not go to class after I dropped them off? And literally, whether they try to connect with them via cellphone themselves or they call the school office, um, it's simple. We hop up and within thirty seconds, unless it's on the locational building, it takes me about ninety seconds to get down there and just check. Yep, they're sitting in class, all is well, and then they're happy, you know, and it's, it's, it's good, you know? Like I said, there's, um, for the most part, um, the added layers of communication do fine-tune all the, all the positives that are going on around here, so. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Very, very nice. Next report will be our business manager, Mark Masten, Masten, talking about the eighteen, eighteen, nineteen budget.
Which page, right here, Mark?
Uh, keep going.
Good.
Keep going. You'll notice right there, it's got very fine print, so I gotta get this changed. But, uh, just, uh, this is the budget, as it is today. Uh, there are a number of things that need to be changed yet, because we just got our federal programming, uh, last week, right after I printed this course. And, uh, there's a few other little modifications, but, uh, what you have here is in the, kind of the bluish area is what happened a year ago. In the kind of beige area here, this is what we're doing now, and we hope to be at about five million dollar fund balance, nineteen point two percent of expense, expenses. So, that's a measurement of, for the, for the public, that's a measurement of financial health. State average is about twenty, twenty-two percent, somewhere in there, so we're right in that ballpark. And then the green area is, uh, what we're proposing, and, uh, this is where the board has put in all their work. And, uh, we are going to go down a little bit. Uh, we've been spending a little bit, uh, since we did our cuts. Uh, we, uh, added like Nordic skiing, uh, debate, good programs, but, you know, as, as you keep adding these things, they, they do add up. Uh, so, we'll be at about five million, one hundred and twenty thousand. Uh, our general capital lay fund will be at about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, a little bit, uh, padding there for whatever blows up, uh, between now and a year from now, so, uh, that we have that covered. Health and safety is being phased out, so this is the last year you'll see that on the budget. Food service, uh, community ed, uh, they're in good shape. Construction, same thing as health and safety, uh, is the final year of that, so it'll be gone. And then all these other miscellaneous, uh, like our debt service will be at, uh, I think it's like twenty-one million dollars worth of debt, uh, remaining. So, uh, this first reading of the budget, uh, we're in good shape. It's a lot different than what it was about ten years ago, when we were looking at deficits and trying to manage budget cuts and laundry lists of what we cut and so forth. Here, we're basically covering it through attrition. And so, wow, what a turnaround. So, let's enjoy it for a while. Any questions? The process here is, this is the first reading, second reading, if I haven't heard from you. We then just go ahead and publish it in the next one and then you'll adopt it at that point in time at the next school board meeting.
And publish it, will it be on the website then?
After the next meeting, yes.
Or after the next meeting?
Yep, after the next meeting. Jerry, if you wanna scroll back up to the top, there are pages and pages of documentation there. I think that a little bit of our history on enrollments, fund balances, all that kind of fun stuff that people want to read before they go to bed and need something to sleep on. But it's, it is good information, historical. Here's an interesting one here is percentage increase given to us by the state on our general education dollars. As you can see, we were going through some tough times there with the state and the state was going through tough times too. But they've been pretty consistent at two percent the last couple of years, so that's helped a lot. Just history of fund balances, Jerry, if you wanna, you can see we're at five, but you can see it was much lower in the past. But all that data is there if you want.
So that's probably the biggest one that I always look at is that one right there.
Yes, I know he likes this one because we're ranked four hundred and sixty-fourth out of four hundred and ninety-nine school districts and charter schools in the state. And we've got a nice fund balance, our test scores are up. I mean, I dare any other school to be as efficient and as successful as us in that regard. We do a lot with a little.
We're a lean machine. All right, any questions regarding the budget presentation? Then we'll continue on with our school board reports. Matt?
Lake County Service Co-op Board, we don't meet until June, so I'm reporting on them. The Minnesota High School League and the report, I sent out their annual sixteen seventeen annual report. It just kind of gives a kind of a update of what they did for activities. So they had five hundred and twenty-five members, they had three hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one students participate. They had a survey that was sent out nationally that included fifty-one state high school associations. Showed that participation has increased for the twenty-sixth consecutive year. So nationally, kids are getting more involved in activities and that includes the state of Minnesota. Most popular sports for boys in the state was football, track and field, baseball, basketball, and then soccer. And then for girls, the top five is volleyball, track and field, fast pitch softball, basketball, and cross country. So that's kind of what, just kind of the interesting, one of the things that was interesting that I thought is about our debate. Right now, just, there's eighty-three participating schools, so we'll be added to that list. And so, and so that will be kind of a neat thing to see how that all progresses. The other thing that they gave us, and I also have on their meeting here, is they talked about expenses and revenue in state tournaments. And I think it shows again the impact our state legislators have when they make a decision. And the impact it can have on the Minnesota High School League was, one of the big things was when US Bank was built. One of the agreements that was made to build that is that they would not charge Minnesota High School League to have state football or soccer participants when they're in there to play. So just to give you an example of the revenue difference, so for football, before that, made about three hundred and thirty-one thousand, okay? After this last year that they started US Bank, they made one million fifty-two thousand. So big difference. Same with soccer, before they made about twenty-six thousand. And after this, now they made a hundred and fifty-seven thousand. So definitely makes an impact. But now, if you remember that list I showed you, the one sport that wasn't a top five is hockey. Yet, the one that makes the most money at state tournament is boys hockey, which makes a revenue of one million, one hundred thousand dollars to the state.
So does the X charge them for playing there?
Yep, the X sells charges both for boys, boys and girls hockey and volleyball, wrestling is held there. Is there any other one? Volleyball, I think it's four that are already sold and they all get charged fees, so which was.
And Target Center, Williams Arena, they'll have a charge as well.
Yeah, they all charge. The only one that doesn't is US Bank. That's the only one that does not charge the Minnesota High School League.
But the state made a big contribution towards that stadium.
Absolutely. So that was what happened.
This is the state of hockey?
It is.
So, I mean, not surprised really.
No.
The AA hockey is, you can't get the ticket early, yeah.
So it was interesting just to see the correlation and just participation. They also had their annual meeting, well, not annual, monthly meeting on June fourth, the board of directors did. And so one of the things that are coming up, talking about hockey, is that they have a presentation. The anniversary for season for boys hockey is on their seventy-fifth year and girls is twenty-fifth year. So they're kind of doing this coming year, so they're doing kind of prepping for that celebration. Instant replay in football state tournament will happen this year, so that is gonna take place. So they got that approved. One of the things that I know for basketball that was talked about even is about shot clock, which will not be happening again. But they will be having us at a restricted arc onto our floors. So there'll be an additional thing that'll have to be added to all of our corset host varsity, junior varsity, or beast squad level games. So that's something they did add, which I don't know if many people are asking for that, but it must have been a few. But that's for the eighteen nineteen school year, I mean, season that'll begin. Wrestling, they changed. This is kind of the interesting, wrestling's changed now from having fourteen weight classes that people can go down to twelve during a regular season dual competition to help with numbers. I think that was an ask from the wrestling advisory recommendation that was passed. And also that's coming up, these are gonna be changing, every two years you go through reassignment and that will becoming, not becoming the following year that's coming, not this season, but the following season, it's every two years. So they are working on, right now, a timeline on discussion of classification tournament, tournament format. And this is always a discussion. And of course, football placement recommendations is always an issue because that is, seems to be one of those things that always gets talked about. The one thing I will talk about this, that we talked about US Bank and the increase, one thing that they did decide to do is they are gonna increase ticket fees for a state tournament, two dollars for adults and one dollar for students at the state tournament events.
That's what I was wondering, don't you think the intent of the legislature was to benefit the general public, not the state high school league?
I, I thought that was kind of interesting too.
Yeah, so they raised the rates. That's crazy.
You know, and I know their rationale was they hadn't raised it for, I can't remember how many years it's been since they last raised it, but they did increase the revenues too and it was kind of disappointing, I think people, but you know, they charged a decent amount and but that was one thing they did pass, so that is coming down just for people that have in mind. And so their next board meeting won't be until August fifth through the seventh. But a lot of action taking place over the summer is probably one of our active board meetings they've had in a while. And that's all I have for report.
Nice report, thank you. Natalie Knutson?
Wellness won't be meeting until September and policy is not met, so I have nothing.
All right. And for my reports, Special Act Co-op has not met. Region one was more elaboration on the school districts added to Synergy and the impact. And actually, it's sixty-six thousand students that will be added through the forty districts that are coming on board to Synergy through region one for support, so. Finance, well, we saw the outcropping of some of that work this morning with the budget and no news on activities. So that is my report. Any questions? Moving on to Melissa?
Staff development met last week and it's great. Their teachers planning to do different, going to different workshops and so on this summer. And then curriculum review, we don't meet again until October.
Any questions for Melissa?
I didn't see it in the budget or can find it. Is the staff development budget staying the same?
Increased by five thousand dollars.
Is it thirty now or is it twenty-five? Okay, thirty, thirty, that's great.
Anything else? All right, Wayne?
Meeting confirmed is not met. Five forty-four, we meet this coming Thursday. And for building the grounds, some of our projects have gotten underway and we'll be addressing that a little bit more in the work section also, just some updates.
Yeah, I forgot. Mark, do you want to give the public a general idea of what we're doing, building the grounds?
Probably the biggest project that we've got going this summer is the heat pump replacement project over at Adams. The heat pumps there had reached the end of their life and were starting to fail. And so we're doing a major overhaul of that to improve those, that system. The other projects that we have, we have a number of concrete projects going around, primarily around the Roosevelt area. There's also some bleachers that you may have noticed at the tennis courts. That was part of a donation that we received here for the tennis courts. They're gonna go on platforms and there's gonna be sidewalks going up to them. And that's all going through a donation that we had. We also have some carpet replacements going on in the elementary buildings. We have just in a few rooms, like four or five rooms in each building. We have, let's see, I'm trying to think of the other projects. Oh, we're updating our kitchens over at McKinley and Adams. They'll get some flooring in there in the cafeteria. And we're solving a water problem over at the dishwasher area at the Adams building. Boy.
Jared, since we're just waiting for final numbers from.
Yep, we're waiting for that to happen. We got the owner on board on that to get us some better numbers and an architect in place to try to start getting some final detail that we can build up.
When do we expect that?
Well, one of the spaces that we need to occupy, well, two of the spaces that we need to occupy won't be available until December three first. So there'll have to be some transition for at least one of those tenants out of there. So I'm assuming some of the construction can start in that timeframe, December, January timeframe. But it should be available to us before that August timeline for us to move in and get ready to go for this year.
Okay.
So that'd be what, nineteen?
Maybe twenty-two.
Mark, just for follow-up, too, a lot of these maintenance issues are being funded by our yearly maintenance fee too. Just it's not coming out of our direct fund, but out of the maintenance fund that you.
Correct. Yeah, if you remember on the budget, I said there was like a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. It's that fund that we use to fund all these projects.
All right. And Stephen Vigas?
Okay, so the legislature session is over. A couple of bills that were on the table for Governor Dayton to sign or veto. The big one that he did not veto was the pension, to fix the state pension fund. And which is a big one because with people getting older, or people living longer, I should say, and maybe from the generation getting older, it's gonna put more strain on that fund, so something's gonna happen. They also had a rate of return assumption that, and just my background as a financial advisor is pretty high, it was over eight percent. And when working with my own clients, I'd never ever assumed anything, you know, over eight. And so they brought that assumed rate of return down just to make the numbers a little more realistic. And that's one of the reasons why we're in the mess we were in, because we're, you know, assuming eight percent return plus for years. The effect on state employees, which includes our retirees from the school system, is a reduction in cost of living increases of about one percent, starting in twenty nineteen. And I mean, dollars and cents wise, I mean, you're looking, you know, for a teacher making a, you know, getting a two thousand dollar a month pension, they're gonna, their cost of living reduced by about twenty, twenty bucks a month. Also, on the front end, they're going to require an increase in contributions into the pension fund of a quarter percent for employee, which somebody making fifty thousand dollars, that's a hundred and twenty-five bucks a year, so about ten bucks a month, so it's not gonna be too bad. The district will pay a little bit more, about six hundred and twenty-seven dollars a year. So they're putting more money in, they're reducing the cost, or cost of living increases. But you bring it down to dollars and cents, it's not too much of a, you know, a burden for people, which is, which is good. And it'll fix pensions and keep them, keep them going. So that was a good one that went, that he signed. He also signed the omnibus bonding bill, which education didn't, wasn't pertaining to education quite as much, except that they're gonna offer grants for school districts of twenty-five million dollars that we can apply for. The nice thing that I really liked about it is that it's not all gonna be metro schools getting the money this time. They're saying half of it has to go to rural schools. So we're gonna apply for some and for the grant, of course. And talking to Jerry beforehand, you know, some of the specific projects we're gonna put on the grant is to, is to fix the entrance for Cleveland and then put some special coating on some of the windows that you can actually take the window off, put the coating on it, actually makes it bulletproof without having to buy.
Resistant.
Or sorry, bullet resistant, sorry, wrong word, bullet resistant. Which is a heck of a lot probably cheaper than replacing.
Yeah, it's a three on the class.
And he did veto, there was a, there was a big bill out there for, that did pertain to education, mostly to help schools that are, that have too low fund balances. But, you know, when reading through all this, it made me glad that we don't have either a full Republican controlled, you know, governor, house and senate. And this is why we have these balances in here because, you know, Republicans tend to cut too much or Democrats tend to spend too much. So we have the veto. And so now, Mark Dayton, after a veto, the way to override a veto is a two-thirds majority vote, only if the governor calls a special session, which he hasn't, so it's probably history until next year. And so, and that was, that was the big reason he vetoed it because there's two hundred and twenty-five million dollars going towards these schools, but it was taking money away from community education. It was taking money away from DVD programs, early childhood, which was already allocated, so I'm really glad he vetoed that. So that's kind of about it for legislation. It was a lot of, a lot of nothing, but there was a couple of big things that came out of it. He vetoed a lot of stuff, so.
Summary.
Yeah.
Okay, so Brin, you have a message?
Well, since we last met on that Tuesday morning, right after Memorial Day, we had graduation. We had, again, the ALC graduation went very well. There was a dozen students graduated this year, which is higher than normal. And that ceremony is just really nice where, my favorite part is when teachers speak about each individual student and it's very honorary, very intimate, so good. And then the thank Dean Monkey for organizing the high school graduation where we had Ferguson Falls High School here at Kennedy. And a lot of ALC students showed up again the next night in IQ. We had some people here that drove from Florida, from Arizona, that came in and spent the day with us and were able to go. So it was another great ceremony. The music, speakers, everything went very, very well. And then we just jumped right into Teacher Checkout Day on June fourth, which had a district meeting, which I really appreciated. I was able to share a folder with them on two thousand eighteen, nineteen already. Maybe they don't want to hear that going out the door, that we're not too far away coming back. But I think it's also comforting, you know, here's the trainings we have in the summer. Here's, you know, here's how we're going to document that flow to staff development. Here's our fall in service. So it's just able to, they can kind of think about that in the back of their mind and reflect on their year and prepare for next year. So that was good. Today is another big day. At nine o'clock, we have our new hires coming in today. They're first meeting their mentors and the principals at their building. Basically, it's to get, exchange phone numbers, have a face-to-face with their mentor, be able to see their room, probably except at Adams, it's full of cardboard, the walls, it's kind of amazing, so they're not getting to Adams. They're able to though, get their curriculum, especially elementary teachers, being able to get their math and reading curriculum so they can take a look at over the summer. And then at ten o'clock, they'll come to this building introduction, so if you're available, you could come back at ten and meet people. But it's gonna be a pretty quick day in the sense that we're going to, we're going to talk about paperwork and really get them comfortable, their payroll, their insurance, get all that stuff lined up, do a few other things, have a lunch. But then we're going to do a tour. I'm hoping we can get off the bus today with the rain. But the mayor is going to greet us on the steps of City Hall at one o'clock, little photo op over there, his tip. And if anyone, you know, it was, it was really, really well received last year where the mayor came out. Just does such a nice job of welcoming. And we have packets from the visitor bureau in the chamber and we want to help, we want to take a picture on the Otter. We want, it's probably too slippery to get on today, but do some really, really idea of what's going on in the city. But we tour all of our buildings. We get out and walk through our buildings, so they have an idea of what our district is about. We're able to share a lot of things there. So we're doing that and then other trainings. August is just full. It's August one and two is the envoy training, which we have great attendance at. We have our Google Summit, we have mentor training the week before our fall in service. So we're having a busy summer getting ready for that. The other thing that we're looking at is because of the graduation, graduation rates of our. we're looking at is because of the graduation, graduation rates of our IQ and ALC, which is always probably going to be below that 67%, unfortunately, strive for it. We had a team, excuse me, we had a team of administrators, Kerry Thompson attended MDE, and it was about data. And a lot of this is about attendance. Really, that's the key. You show up, and you try, you're going to pass. I mean, the teachers are going to work with you. So as we look at teams, we have to do a report for our IQ and our ALC, and that's due next March. But we're also looking at, that isn't where attendance issues start. It really starts in preschool, early elementary. We've had kids gone from kindergarten to 30 days this year. We need to really, I think one of the big things that'll come out of this report is a marketing for how important attendance is, how important habits are to develop early on, and work through. So we'll have a preschool through 4th grade team, a middle school team, and then the three high school teams, this building here, and then IQ and ALC. So we're looking at a real robust improvement, and that is on August 6. So, yeah, our summer is planned. We've got stuff to do. So we're ready to go.
Okay. Any questions for the superintendent? Okay. Onto the rest of our agenda. The general consent items include several things, which would be consideration of approval of our minutes from our last board meeting. And then bills and potential reports. Natalie, how's it going?
I'm going to hand that one off to Matt. This morning, I was unable to make it.
Okay.
For our general fund balance, we have $7,405,000. Oh, wait, that's wrong. $7,405,068.58. Overall, we have $10 million, a little bit over $10 million. For bills-wise, they were just general, nothing really out of the ordinary. And I would approve, I would recommend we approve the bills as presented.
All right. Very good. And then superintendent, about our personnel.
Yeah, it's trying to highlight here. We have a number of things, again. It's been our mantra. It's interesting that a few months ago, here, Tara Miller was on the cut list, termination list. Well, she's already back and already up to 1.833. So that is in middle school math. And IQ, Heather Heikis, which is working with School of Choice, they're actually increasing their number of students and also operating. So they go to school on Tuesdays and Thursdays all day. And now it'll be extended on Fridays from start of school through about 1 o'clock. So more and more students coming, coming to that, which is great. Then a little surprise visit last week that Denny Heistad, an elementary teacher, walked in the door and handed in his resignation, reflected on his year, and just really want to congratulate him, and we'll have a resolution here later. Judy Harthoon is a custodian at REC, and we have already hired the replacement there. We knew that one was coming. Kaylee Grant resigned from special ed, paraprofessional. And Monty Fred Fredrickson, our girls softball coach, has resigned. And then we settled contracts with mechanical supervisor, technology systems manager, school nurse, technology specialist, support staff, and confidential secretary. So I recommend approval of those items.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the general consent item? Some more. Is there a second?
A second.
All right. I'll take Stephen on that. And then, any discussion? Okay. All in favor of approving the general consent item? Say aye. Oppose, say nay. All right. And onward to new business, a resolution on the retirement of Dennis Heistad. Whereas Denny Heistad began his employment with Fergus Falls Public Schools in August 1986, and whereas Denny has been a valued employee with the Fergus Falls Public Schools for the past 32 years. And whereas Denny has done an excellent job as a curriculum integration specialist and elementary teacher for the district, and now therefore be resolved by the Fergus Falls School Board to thank Denny Heistad for his 32 years of dedicated service to Fergus Falls Public Schools. Will someone offer that resolution and move for adoption?
Offer resolution, move for its adoption.
And a second.
Oh, second.
Any discussion? We'll go to roll call vote, please.
Natalie Cole?
Yes.
Matt Lankin?
Yes.
Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
Lane Daniels, yes. Natalie Vigesson?
Yes.
Did she hear me?
Yes.
Resolution passed.
All right. Thank you. Carrying on in the same fashion, resolution on the retirement of Judy Harthoon. Whereas Judy Harthoon began her employment with Fergus Falls Public Schools in November 1995, and whereas Judy has been a valued employee with Fergus Falls Public Schools for the past 23 years, and whereas Judy has done an excellent job as a custodian throughout the district, and now therefore be it resolved by Fergus Falls School Board to thank Judy Harthoon for her 23 years of dedicated service to Fergus Falls Public School. Will someone offer that resolution?
I'll offer the resolution, move for adoption.
Thank you. And a second?
A second.
I'll take Natalie on that. Thanks. All right. And any discussion? All in favor? Or, no, I mean, roll call vote on that then, please?
Ms. Yerby?
Yes.
Stephen Vigesson?
Yes.
Lane Daniels, yes. Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
Matt Lankin, yes. Natalie Cole?
Yes.
Resolution passed.
All right. And then, since we've spent some time on this already, I'd just move straight to asking for a motion to approve the first reading of the budget for fiscal year 2019.
There's no action on this, right?
Oh, you're right.
That is correct. So any other, any other questions?
Yeah, any questions, we'll bring this back for, after we digest it a little bit more, and then we'll have action. All right. Moving on. Is there a motion to approve our membership with Minnesota Rural Education Association? It costs $2,500 a year, which is not an increase from the past, but a group that serves to advocate for greater Minnesota schools. Will someone offer that motion?
I move that we renew our membership in the Minnesota Rural Education Association.
All right. And is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this?
Just kind of more, just saying thank, I'm very thankful for them, just because state legislators, we know that out of state Minnesota cannot get as much talking time as other ones inside the metro, and it's great to have them to advocate for us.
I agree. Any other commentary, questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Oppose, say nay. Okay, that is approved. And then, is there a motion to approve the handbook that we reviewed this morning?
Some more.
And a second? All right. Any discussion on that? All in favor of approving the changes in the overall handbook, say aye. Oppose, say nay. All right, that is approved. And we'll have a work session for a bit after the conclusion of our meeting this morning, and our next regular board meeting on Monday, June 15th, here in the Otter Community Room at 7:15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
June 25th.
Oh, yeah, June 25th, what did I say, 17?
15.
Yeah. 15, 16.
10 days.
I was already discussing things in our work session. All right. Now, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Some.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adjournings, say aye. Oppose, say nay. And that concludes the meeting. Thank you.